All right, we'll call the meeting to order if we can start and stand for the pledge of the Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in existent form, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, seating of alternates tonight. I see that we have Paula seating tonight for Chairman Lockwood, who's not able to attend. Otherwise, the Commission is present, and I would invite you, starting from the right, to introduce.
Eric Lukienbeal, member.
Christine Chinneyman.
Eric Myers, vice chair.
Paula Johnson, alternate.
Bob Lafferty, member.
Steve Muller, member.
Brennan Shaheenan, member.
Okay, thank you, Commission. Moving on to item number four, public session. I'm going to open up the public session. Public session is the opportunity for the public to speak to the Commission about any item they wish that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Come on up, introduce yourself, please.
I'm on 138th Street. I'm probably not going to speak based upon what you said. I want a clarification. There is an item on the agenda, item number 11, okay? So I'm assuming there will be a right to speak on this at some point?
Not tonight. Tonight is for Commission discussion, and if we move beyond -- this will be the second time we're discussing this particular item. If we agree that the item is ready, it will be scheduled for public comment in the future.
I've got a lot of comments.
Very good.
Good.
Any other -- anyone from the audience before I go to Zoom that would like to speak to the Commission? All right, anybody on Zoom who would like to speak to us tonight? All right, hearing none. I'm going to move to close the public session for tonight, public hearing tonight. Moving on to item number five, action on the minutes of November 12, 2024. I did take a quick look at them. Was it attendance? I don't see anything specific that needs updating. Anybody else?
I thought they looked good.
It's good.
Seeing, hearing no feedback, I'd entertain a motion to accept the minute.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion abstained?
I abstain.
Two abstentions. Minutes are approved. Moving on to public hearings. Tonight, we have two public hearings, and I would invite Commissioner Chinney, if you could read the first public hearing notice, please.
Of course. There will be a public hearing conducted by the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, December 10, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. The hearing considered the following item: application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations sections 8.5.2 and 8.5.3 for a detached accessory apartment in excess of 1,200 square feet for property located at 70 Lakeside Drive, R30 Zone, file Z-23-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposal are on file in the Community Development Office.
Thank you, Commissioner Chinney. Is the applicant here this evening to discuss the application?
Good evening, Mr. Myers, members.
You'd introduce yourself, please.
I was about to do that. John Madadi, 70 Lakeside Drive.
Sorry, I jumped over there. Thank you.
I'm the applicant. With me tonight is Tracy Cavacchudi. I think that Abby did a good job in her recitation, but I'll just go over a little bit about the property and what we're trying to accomplish. She's correct, it's a 7.3-acre parcel. It's actually, there are three contiguous parcels totaling about 12 acres. We kind of consider it to be one parcel. On that property, all of the buildings, there's four outbuildings now and a horse shed now, are located on parcel B. That's 7.3 acres. It has a lot of frontage, I think about 300 feet on Manitook Lake. If any of you have been there, we've since about 2009, I think, we got approval from this Commission to do off-site catering, and we hosted a lot of events at Manitook Camp. The property was a cobra tobacco camp. My belated wife and I converted the property, purchased it to preserve it, and converted it to our house. 7.5 acres of the 12 acres is in conservation easement. That kind of crosses all three parcels. We preserved the critical wetlands and the upland forest areas. We're kind of in a transition period in our life at this point. The catering business didn't survive the pandemic. My partner Karen Motilliano decided to retire, so we've been kind of changing the property completely from that use to more of an agricultural use currently before the Wetlands Commission, to get a wetlands permit to allow Tracy to bring her horse and her mule over to the property. We would like to take the big building on the property, which was the dining hall built, I think, in the late 80s for the people who worked in the tobacco fields. As I said, it was originally used as a dining hall for all of the camps that cobra tobacco had. When we purchased the property, we got approval for off-site catering. We also did a lot of public fundraisers. We did three fundraisers for Granby 225. We did Granby football. We did cystic fibrosis, cancer, pancreatic cancer, a lot of stuff. So I think the proposal that we have will be a lot less intensive than some of the uses that the property had before. You know, when I was first moved to Granby in 86, it was full of campers, probably 200, on the property every day. So we're proposing to take just a little bit about it, just shy of half of the property and turn it into an in-law apartment with two bedrooms. You'll see on the package that we submitted, there's a outline of the in-law apartment. It currently has two handicap-accessible bathrooms, which we will use as the bathrooms by adding showers into that area. The commercial kitchen, most of the equipment has been sold. It's all been sold. It's just we're waiting for people to pick it up. So we're using that area as the kitchen area. Because it was a commercial kitchen, it had its own septic system, which will have to be reviewed if you are inclined to give us this permit. It will have to be reviewed by Farmington Valley Health District to see if it can support a two-bedroom apartment. The reason we use the space that we're using, which is a far end away from where my house is, is that all the utilities are there, septic is there, the boiler's there, the bathrooms are there, and in order to have the bedrooms, we had to get two windows for ingress and egress to meet building code. So when I had DeAngelo Builders design it, they felt that that was the best, most efficient use of the space. There is, it is a little confusing when you look at the drawing, because there's something called new storage area. That's actually existing open area. When the designer from DeAngelo designed it, he has to bring all of the exterior walls of the apartment up to grade. He just thought it would be a better use of the space and cheaper if he just used the outline area to get his R-values in the MEAT code. So we're not planning to do anything differently than what's there. The existing mechanicals are in that space. The rest of the space, we're just leave it the way it has been for since the 80s when it was built. The current intention for the foreseeable future, we are hoping that Tracy's son Dylan Cavacchudi can live in that space if we get approval. He's been living over her horse property over on Candlewood, but we're trying to consolidate a little bit. I'm happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Thank you for that. Abby, would you mind, I know you've provided a write-out, but give us a general overview about the compliance of the request within the current regulations?
Sure. So under the current regulations, by special permit, the Commission can consider a detached accessory apartment, which this is, and the Commission can also consider apartment in excess of 1,200 square feet, which this is also at about, well, just, yeah, 1,450 square feet, thereabouts. Looking through the regulations, I mean, I did include a copy in the memo, this detached accessory apartment does comply with all of that, all the criteria outlined. I would like to note that when it comes to the Commission considering apartment in excess of 1,200 square feet, there is an upper cap, so it can't exceed 40% of the floor area of the home, and 40% of the floor area of the home is just over 2,000 square feet. So even though this is over the permitted 1,200 square feet, it does comply with that upper threshold. And certainly, as the applicant indicated, if the Commission does approve this, it would have to go before Farmington Valley Health Districts. They would have another review in terms of the septic, and then our building official would have to review it for compliance, obviously, with the building code. And other than that, I do not have anything else to add.
Well, great. Thank you for that summary. I'll open up with, I think it's less of a question, but just more observation. You did mention that the primary residents on the property's owner occupied by--
Yes, by myself, Tracy, and hopefully temporarily Dylan.
Okay, great. And you do understand--
Four dogs.
Four dogs, and it sounds like a happy family.
Most days.
You do understand that the primary residents must be owner-occupied to have an accessory apartment?
Yes, yes. I intend to stay there for the rest of my life, so--
So be it. It's the only question I had.
I don't have any questions.
Looks good.
That's surprising, Mr. Lukienbeal. I don't think I've ever appeared before this Commission when you didn't have at least one question.
Well, usually he has with the landscape.
That's right.
I was going to say--
I do need your advice on some Japanese knot wood.
Oh, okay. That's a tough one.
It is.
Any other questions for the other side?
So the septic area of the building is just going to be vacant for storage or something?
Yeah, I mean, now it's, and what's in there, you know, various things have been in there. Right now, I've got an antique canoe that they're going to move to the house. Last year, I redid a canoe, an old metal canoe, just used that open space. It was a catering facility for all those years, so we had folding tables in there. Most of that stuff's out. About the only event I intend on having there going forward is my 70th birthday party.
Very nice.
I don't know how excited I am.
I don't have any questions.
None. All right. We'll table the questions for a moment, and I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to move to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak to this application?
No.
Very good. All right, it seems there's no questions from the room. There's no more commissions from the Commission. I'll give you the final word.
I've probably taken too much of your time. I think you have the picture. Just hopefully you'll see fit to give us this permit. Thank you.
Very good.
And have a great holiday.
You, too. Well, I'm going to close the public hearing in this application, and thank you very much. The Commission has 65 days to act on this, but if you were so inclined to hang around, you might hear about it tonight, but--
That's all I have for you in the morning.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to the next one. Would you mind, Commissioner, reading in the public notice?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, December 10, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. To hear and consider the following item: an application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations section 8.1.3.4 for a garage in excess of 1,000 square feet for property located at 10R Eric Drive, R30 Zone, file Z-24-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the Community Development Office.
Thank you, Commissioner Chinney. Is the applicant here to discuss the applicant?
Yes.
And please step up, introduce yourself, your name and address.
Bob Broderick, 10 Eric Drive. Good evening.
Good evening.
First, let me explain the property that the building will be on. 10 Eric Drive is a double rear flaglot, about 600 feet from the road to the front of the house, and the structure is planned to be behind the house, to the north side of the house. Neither the house nor where the structure will be is visible from Eric Drive. The access road to the building will be off an existing turnaround on the current driveway that'll be extended to meet the front of the building. Building's for personal use. I have a classic Camaro, 51 years old, and it's in a small two-car garage that was built with the house, and I'm surprised something bad hasn't happened to the car yet, as far as being in that tight environment. I'm also looking to keep other, I have five vehicles, to keep other vehicles in the structure, and I'm looking forward to someday grabbing another car, classic car. So I want to have more than one. The building will be erected by Morton, Morton Buildings. Their office is in Westfield, Mass. And the electrical service plan for the building would be a 100-amp service running off the current service on the house. It'll route underground to the building. Interior lighting will be mounted to the ceiling, positioned properly and switched logically, probably daylight Kelvin for interior, like 4,500. The exterior lighting, I don't see the need for anything more than one over the front center of the building and one over the side door. I would probably go with about 3,500 Kelvin, which is more of a soft yellow light. I don't need anything too bright in front of the building. Okay. The all lighting would probably be LED. Exterior color, we finally decided on beige. I don't know if you have the rendering. I think it's toward the end of the package of the building. I don't know how many sides it's shown. Anyway, that was done initially off a generic color scheme, not too exciting, black and white. So the final colors will be ivory for the vertical main portion of the building. The bottom stripe will be beige, and the doors will also be beige. We had other colors, but the palette for the doors isn't as large as the palette for the structure itself, so we had to make some changes. Interior color will be an off-white. They have a metallic reflective interior surface. The building will be insulated, so we'll finish with an interior metal that has R19 and R36, R38, sorry, in the ceilings. There'll be no water or interior drainage plan, and expecting to put a 20-foot apron, concrete apron, off the front of the building. So--
Any questions? We will. So Abby, could you give us a summary of the suitability for the request on the lot?
Yep. So the applicant said they're requesting a special permit for a garage that's 1,800 square feet in size, and again, anything over 1,000 square feet does require a special permit based on the lot area. So under the current zoning regulations, 200 square feet of garage is allowed for every 10,000 square feet of lot size, and this does, the 1,800 square feet does comply with that. I believe it could be up to 2,400 or 2,500 square feet for this. As shown on the applicant's site plan, it does meet the required setbacks based on the dimensions of the garage, which are proposed to measure 40 by 45 feet, and given the required setbacks in that zone. And I do want to point out, too, that this location is within the upland review area, and the applicant did receive approval from the wetlands agent for the location. With this special permit, as noted in the memo, the Commission is to consider the special permit criterion section 8.2, including suitable location for use, suitable structure for use, environmental compatibility, and neighborhood compatibility. So some additional considerations. And as stated by the applicant, I'd just like to reinforce that this is proposed to be for personal use, so, you know, not a business of any nature, landscape.
Okay, all right. So I'll open up just a couple of quick questions. Any HVAC? HVAC, heating, accruling?
Haven't decided on it. If there's going to be anything, certainly a ceiling fan for ventilation and maybe propane heat, but I've decided on nothing yet. I don't think it'll be done until springtime anyway, so we'll worry about that next year.
Understood. Thank you. It appears to me from the drawing where the proposed garage is, in your, this flaglot as you described, it is setback. It doesn't look like there's a lot of activity around you. It doesn't seem like anybody will even see this. Is that a fair representation?
Next-door neighbor may be able to see it, but you can't see our house from Eric Drive.
And--
It's about 600 feet back from the pavement of Eric Drive.
And you covered the lighting, which would have been a question when you're considering neighbors and suitability, just making sure the lighting is not offensive, bright, on-timers, turned off at night.
The intention is, you know, downward facing on the front of the building and low Kelvin for soft light, you know, what would be like a yellow, yellow light.
It's the only questions I have.
I have a little history.
Oh.
When we began talking about special permits for garages and barns, it was because there was a Morton building that was built in a residential district, and it was felt it was more commercial, more industrial than residential. So I like the way you've set it back. I'm certainly happy you toned down the color so it'll fit in, but I still have a little bit of a problem of a Morton building, because it really is an industrial building, not a residential. And if we say yes to you because you are in a fairly good area, does that set precedence for other residential areas that could say, well, you approved it here, so you should approve it there? So I'm not sure how to handle that. I like what you're doing. I understand why you're wanting to do it, but the type of building seems to me industrial as opposed to residential.
So I just, it's great observation. I did, that's why I was curious about visibility to anyone else, and it sounds like possibly one other, but I, Abby, I don't know that exhaustive research has needed anything other than anecdotal, but I believe we've seen plenty of Morton buildings come our way for this type of use. It's a common--
So I'm trying to think. The last one that the Commission approved was on Silver Street, and that was wood with two overhangs on each side. Granville Road for the landscaping business, I think that was wood. The last Morton was 96 Hartman Road.
I do recall. So maybe many is, at least in the foreseeable future, was an exaggeration, but I know we've seen at least one. Morton is a pretty common name in this, in this space.
What?
Tom Vaughn, Vaughn's on Day Street.
Oh, Day Street. Well, he's a farm. He's got how many acres there?
But it's residential, and you can see it.
Yeah, yeah.
What about the criterion that we have, suitable location for use? Should another one of these come before us and it's clearly going to be visible to everybody in the neighborhood, and then we could say no?
That's my concern, to make sure that we do not set ourselves up, or you do not set yourselves up, for being kind of squirreled into having--
I feel like the suitable location for use criterion is about this precisely, that in this particular location, it's not going to be visible to anybody. If somebody wanted to put one, you know, on a three, on a two-acre lot in a neighborhood with a bunch of adjacent two-acre lots, I think we could say, well, that's a different situation than this.
I tend to agree. I think we have some.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, if the neighbor came in and said, I don't want to be looking at a steel building, you know, I might be inclined to listen to him, but I don't see anybody here. Obviously, you're going to open it up, but--
It's great observation. We do always encourage applicants to speak with neighbors with regarding to this stuff. Is your neighbor aware that you're here? Oh, they're upstairs.
I spoke with Laura today. She said she'd be on.
Well, we'll get some feedback.
You could ask her again.
We'll be asking for feedback, so there you go.
Is that a swimming pool in her?
Yeah.
Is that what that is?
They have a swimming pool.
That's what it looks like in the drawing, in the picture.
Steve, Brennan, any questions?
No, just, we're considering the steel building. We're calling it a Morton, but it's a steel building. So is this the type of siding that's going to be on it that you see in the rendering, or is it going to be a regular flat panel with--
Yeah, you know, that's a good question. I'm not exactly sure.
This rendering here does not look like a typical steel Morton building to me. That looks like it's more of a design, but--
What's that?
I think it's very tractable.
Yeah, I may have pictures.
While he's looking, Brennan, any questions?
I mean, you could break something that up with some landscaping, a couple well-planted trees, you know, make it look better instead of just a big Morton building. So I think it could be a piece easy enough with some plantings.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
Great.
You can do a lot with buildings with plantings.
Yeah, you put a couple of nice things here and there, and you would--
It would blend in with the surrounding--
I actually didn't know this was a Morton building until it was brought up as a steel building. It looks good to me. I mean--
It's like that, I would be okay with something looking like that.
The color sounds good. Sounds better.
Rather than the ones with the big panels and just--
Yeah, the color is much better than looking at this white. I went, oh, my goodness.
The actual colors, but that's probably a pretty good record of what--
Yeah, that looks great.
It's a board and baton.
Yeah.
That looks very nice.
A lot different than--
Yeah, a lot different than what we have here on the hill.
Steel buildings have come along.
Yeah, yeah.
Peterson?
I think there is.
No.
Okay.
That's really nice.
All right.
Much better. You should have given us.
Yeah, nice picture.
Much better.
All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. We'll get right back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak to this application? All right, I'm going to move to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak to this application?
This is Laura Sewell, and I am the neighbor, and I have a slight concern about being able to see the building. So my only suggestion would be to make sure there are plants between the two property lines, and you've already brought that up within your conversation. So that was just why I was here, was to make sure that would be done.
Great, Laura, thank you. Any additional feedback for us?
No, I mean, the Brodericks have always been very good neighbors, so as far as lighting and other concerns, I'm sure we can always just speak with them about it.
Yeah. We can speak about the plants, too, if you want.
Okay.
Okay, no, we can. I wouldn't want to, you know, wouldn't want you to be uninvolved.
So what would, you know, ask, I'll throw something out to you. If during discussion, after we closed the public hearing, if the Commission decided to throw in a requirement condition for the public that you put some, we would generally refer to it as some screening, and if we put that in there, would that be problematic for you?
No. No, no, because there's going to be a lot of soil that's left on the property, and I got to do something with it.
Or often a nice berm with some plantings on top of it, what makes a wonderful screen.
Yep. I can picture a little hill with these nice sawgrass growing.
Great. Okay. All right. Commission, hearing that, we might, you know, want to think about something for the motion, but other than that, any other questions for the applicant before we close out tonight? Abby, are we good? All right. Last word.
Good evening.
All right. With that, I'm going to close the public session and hearing. The applicant, the commission has 65 days to respond to the application, but if you stay put, you might hear about it very shortly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the next item, item number seven on our agenda tonight is to receive applications and schedule public hearings if any were received after the publication. Are there any?
No, we have not received any.
So are you indicating the next meeting we get off, unless we choose to take care of some business?
Yes, unless we decide to have some discussions.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll table that further in the agenda. Item number eight, consideration of applications where the commission has concluded the public hearings. I suppose we'll take them as we heard them. Talk about the accessory apartment. I'll start by, it seems very straightforward. Abby indicated that it meets all of the requirements per the regulations. The application was well presented and represented. I generally don't have any issues.
It looks good to me.
It's actually a less heavy duty use than was there.
Sure sounds like it. Probably creates an opportunity to... All right, well, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. I move that we accept the application for a, if I get the right one in front of me here, a detached accessory apartment in excess of 12,000 square feet, property located at 70 Lakeside Drive.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimous. Welcome. Moving on to the next application tonight, the one that we just heard for the garage. I believe that we had some good debate about how the structure would fit in to the neighborhood, and we heard from the one neighbor who possibly can see the structure. I think we received the clarification on the structure, how it looks nice, and there was an offering, an acceptance, more or less, of some screening to help with the neighbor's view. So any discussion tonight?
No, I think since I had reservations, I feel comfortable with this. I think it looks good. The building looks good. I'm willing to work with the neighbor for the screening was good. I think it should be a good addition to the neighbor's property.
Any other discussion there?
No, I'm good.
So I would entertain a motion that has a carve-out for screening and go for that?
I move that the commission approve an application, the application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations, Section 8.1.3.4, for a garage in excess of 1,000 square feet for a property located at 10R Eric Drive, R30 Zone, provided that the applicant provides landscaping to screen the property from the adjacent neighbor, and with said screening to be approved by staff.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations. Okay, we have finished the applications for this evening.
I have a question. The satisfaction of that screening, is that...
Up to Abby.
Up to staff.
Up to staff. So you don't have to come back to us. Explain what your plan is due to Abby, and she has the authority to approve it on her own.
All right. So my advice generally, work it out with the neighbor, come to see Abby with some sort of a plan on what you're going to do, and...
Talk to O'Brien.
Yeah, and then you'll get your special permit.
Is she there, or is she still there?
She's still there. Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you.
Okay, consideration, I chuckle, of a request for a 90-day extension for Cider Hill Heights, 10-lot, FRD subdivision. I swear, this is deja vu like multiple times, is it?
Yeah. So this is the second extension. So the commission approved the application in May. The applicant did not file within 90 days, so the commission approved an extension in September. So this is the last extension that the commission can approve for that applicant to file the milars. They have been approved their bond amount. I do still need to review their security agreement. It's sitting in my email, so I do anticipate that they will be wrapping up to file the milars, and if not, they will just have to reapply to the commission.
Any commission discussion on this item? It seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I don't see any reason not to grant it.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll entertain a motion to request a 90-day...
I move that the commission grant the request for a 90-day filing extension for File P-1-Pash-24, Cider Mill Heights, 10-lot, FRD, re-subdivision, with the understanding that this is the final extension available.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimous. Item number 10, Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-24, referral, relinquish interest in Phelps Road Cemetery property, Suffield. I did read over this item, as did the rest of the listeners. It's very interesting, but I, could you explain?
Sure, yes.
Very bizarre.
It is interesting, isn't it?
Interesting.
For any of the residents here.
That was good. That was good.
Yeah, this was, I think, news to everyone. So the town of Suffield owns a cemetery on Phelps Road. It's about just over half an acre. It was deeded to Suffield in 1788. The deed, which is included in the memo, states to inhabitants of Suffield and Granby from Elijah Phelps. So there is a, the Mountain Burying Ground Association owns a property adjacent to this parcel, and they approached the town of Suffield, wanting to take this piece under their control. Suffield does not have an issue with that. However, when reviewing the deed, they noticed that Granby is referenced, so the town attorney has opined that Granby needs to take action to relinquish our interest in that piece, so they can then transfer it over to the Burying Ground Association. We did run it by the town attorney. He reviewed. He agrees with their opinion. The Board of Selectmen reviewed this at their meeting in November. They have referred it to planning and zoning under CGS 8-24. They are looking for a report from this commission, and then they'll take action on it at their meeting in January. And I don't see any conflicts with plan of conservation development.
Sounds good. Well, it's not even in Granby, so.
That's very interesting.
It's just, it's kind of coming from the Midwest. It's just, I mean, all this beautiful color.
Isn't it beautiful?
Did anyone even know we had an interest in this property?
Not that I know of, no. Makes you wonder what else we have interest in.
If we had, I mean, I would assume that maybe somebody who lived in North Granby could say, I would like to be buried there.
Yeah. Are we giving up anything by giving this up? I mean, do you have a right to be buried there for free, or do you just...
Or you'd have to pay. Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know.
The other question I had, and I'm not trying to be technical or difficult, but we need to assure the Board of Selectmen that this is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, but my way of thinking, the plan of conservation and development has no jurisdiction over any land in Suffield.
That's my feeling. It has nothing to do with the plan.
I don't, you know, go ahead and do it if you want to. To me, it's up to the Board of Selectmen.
So I think this came over as a requirement of the statute for the referral, and I know they're looking for our plan, whatever that means, but I don't know what plan we can give them other than to say that we don't have any issue.
I feel like it's more pertinent to ask if it is consistent with Suffield's plan of conservation and development, and that's certainly well outside our jurisdiction.
So what kind of plan are they looking for from us? Is it just...
Just move that...
That we agree with.
That we agree that it should be relinquished, something like that.
I would just suggest that anything we do that relinquishes it says that we're relinquishing it to them with the understanding that they will continue to perpetually maintain it as a burial ground. You don't want an office building going up, and then people coming and saying, why did you agree to let this ancient cemetery be demolished? That's a great call.
That's a very good...
We've got to put that in there.
And also, to Eric's point, you know, what more relates you? Can we still get buried in there? I've been to a Granby. I didn't know it was there, but now I think I picked my spot.
Might be a good spot, too.
It's, I'm actually familiar with it. It's pretty small. It's really quite small. If we go burying there, that's how I know.
So hearing most of the feedback, the feedback as it pertains to maintaining the property in its current state, can we include that?
I mean, so Board of Selectmen is looking for a report from this commission, and they will take action from there.
So do we have to do this tonight? I mean, could you prepare our report, and we could hear about it at the next meeting, or is our report simply that, that we don't have any objection?
If that's the referral.
With relinquishing it and understanding that they will maintain it as a cemetery, not turn it into, I think, something like an office building.
Recommend, our recommendation would be.
It's probably not zone for that.
I mean, ultimately, you know, I don't know. Again, it's the Board of Selectmen that takes...
What business is of ours that whether they turn it into an office building? As far as I'm concerned, if Suffield wanted to change their zoning and put a McDonald's there, they could do it.
That's true. It isn't.
It's not ours.
Yeah, I think it's...
Although, there's probably some Granby residents would be paved over if they, you know, by the drive through.
I mean, it's the Mountain Burying Ground Association is the one who is approaching the town of Suffield, so it would, I think it's safe to assume that it would, you know, remain a cemetery, but...
I would think so, you know.
Yeah. That's probably why they want it, is because they want to maintain it in concert with their parcel that's adjacent.
I think we should just support the Selectmen and say we agree with what the Selectmen decide.
That's what I think, too. Because it really, it feels like this is just a formality, and the decision is really there. So if we're ready to entertain a motion?
Do we need, does this require a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to relinquish interest in the Phelps Road Cemetery, or not have any objections to doing so.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission, pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-24, raise no objection to relinquishing the town of Granby's interest in the Phelps Road Cemetery property located in Suffield.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Paula. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Abstain? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimous.
Did we ever open it to the public seriously? I mean...
No.
There's no...
No public hearing. All right, moving on to item number 11, commission discussion, proposed revisions and corrections to the zoning regs.
They can... Excuse me, I was interrupting.
Nope. All right, I'll repeat. Commission discussion, moving on to item number 11, commission discussion on the proposed revisions and corrections that we started at the last meeting. You want to give us an overview, Abby?
Yes. So I did not include all the previous revisions that were discussed. It is my plan prior to everything, the commission taking any further action, to bundle it all together. The commission can give everything another review, and then a decision can be made. So for the purpose of tonight, I focused in on a simplified site plan provision, which I thought was one of the points of discussion at the last meeting, where we were discussing Section 4.2, the site plan requirements. So first, Section 4.2.1, the language, the text in black, is the current regulation, so this is waiver of requirements. When site plan approval is required as part of a special permit application in an R4A, R2A, R50, or R30 zone, the commission may modify or waive the requirements of Sections 4.1.3, 4.1.5. I'm proposing to add 4.2.1, and then 4.2.3 and 4.2.5 remain the same. 4.2.1 is the requirement that milars be filed on land records. So typically, with a special permit application in that zone, an applicant will not generate milars. This would be like a residential landscape business where the commission receives a plot plan of where it's going. Typically, it's not fully engineered, so milars aren't printed to be filed. We maintain that record in our office instead. So this is a proposed change to kind of codify what has been practiced by this commission. And then there would be a new proposed Section 4.2.1.14, simplified site plan. And this language is intended to address a use and construction on a property, or an A2 survey, and the cost of that is kind of cost prohibitive compared to what an applicant is proposing. So this proposed language states, when a fully engineered site plan is cost prohibitive relative to the cost of a proposed minor change, for which an A2 survey is not necessary to determine inland wetland or zoning compliance, or when site plan approval is required as part of a special permit application in an R4A, R2A, R50, or R30 zone, the proposed changes do not involve significant grading, storm drainage, floodplain, underground utilities, or other attributes requiring professional design, location, and/or documentation on a site plan. The building official, director of community development, town engineer, farmer, or other applicable staff members may mutually agree to allow a simplified site plan that is limited in scope to the vicinity of the proposed change. Simplified site plans shall be drawn to scale and demonstrate compliance with all relevant regulations to the satisfaction of relevant town staff, but do not need to be professionally drawn and sealed. So again, thinking to some of the applications that have been submitted recently, outdoor storage comes to mind upon Salmon Brook Street. The applicant did come in and have a fully engineered site plan for the building addition, but when he came back in for the outdoor storage, he used that engineered plan to draw to scale where that outdoor storage area was proposed for the commission's review. So that would be an example of having that codified in the regulations to allow that, if the commission is comfortable with that. So welcome to thoughts, suggested changes.
I think it's great, and I don't know if it's an apples-to-apples comparison, but we saw it on display tonight, where the applicant for the garage drew a red box on the aerial view. It would, it made perfect sense for what we're looking at tonight. To ask them to have thousands of dollars of engineered plans seems not appropriate. So I think this code is perfect for that use. It gives us the discretion needed to help a homeowner in this case out. I mean, is that, this is sort of applicable to that, right?
Yes.
But for Salmon Brook Vet, it's not applicable to that.
That's right, not applicable to Salmon Brook Vet.
Because it has a lot more drainage and...
Right, yeah.
Yes. So I like it.
And on the face of this, this would not apply to the Salmon Brook Vet.
No.
So we're still clear that under those circumstances, you would need to... I think that, I think it makes sense. I don't think it makes sense to have people spend thousands of dollars on a professionally engineered plan for something like what the gentleman who wanted to, actually, both of them presented tonight. I just don't think for the magnitude of the change they're asking for, to make them go to that expense, it just seems, it doesn't make sense to me.
And the statute permits us to waive these requirements? Okay, yeah, then I don't have a problem with it. I think we should incorporate it.
I do, too.
I love the idea of packaging it all together for a final draft before we make the decision to send it to CROG and open up public hearing.
Okay.
So is that all adding on the...
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to item number 12, which is staff report in correspondence.
Yes, just two items I want to bring to your attention. I was contacted by the Conservation Commission. They had some further discussions about the landscaping requirements and invasive species, so they are looking to present again to this commission in January. They've indicated that the second meeting in January probably works better for them. They did take the feedback and comments that were generated when they were here before and made some tweaks to that language. So do you want to... So do want to present it for review. Again, it's not a formal application at this point, but it would, again, just be for further discussion and allow them to present to you all. So that's one that's coming. And then the ag commission presented a right to farm ordinance to the Board of Selectmen at their meeting last week, and the Board of Selectmen took action to refer it to Planning and Zoning Commission and Development Commission for comment. And they're asking for feedback within 90 days. So that would also be something for January for this commission to look at. And that's all I have for my report.
Commissioner reports in correspondence. I'll offer up one. I believe it's been discussed at least one occasion, primarily by myself. There was some feedback and observations related to Julian's and the impact it was having to the Barn door Hills neighborhood. And I'm at least partially pleased to report that while the traffic is, you know, these decisions that we make when we open up these farm ventures and residential neighborhoods absolutely have impacts, I feel it directly as do the other neighbors. That's not changed. However, the parking situation has been corrected. They are now, it appears to be paying an attendant to be out at the street, you know, wearing a vest, making sure nobody is street parking. And that has at least alleviated the safety concerns. And I also would thank him if he was here today or if he'll watch the tape. Chief Sansom posted, placed one of the town's mobile, semi-mobile, speed enforcement units at the Simsbury end of Barn door Hills Road to encourage folks that are coming in from that side to slow down. So at least what seems to have been possibly done has been done. But again, for the commission for future applications like this, just to know that we've approved several of them over the years in various locations, and they do impact the neighborhoods where they happen. It's basically letting a restaurant operate in our residential neighborhood is really what has happened here. So that's a report out, so a little improvement.
I'm sorry, one more thing I forgot.
Oh, great.
Not related to that. On January 13th, there will be a special joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Commission on Aging, so they will be reviewing three Kerns proposals from respondents. So I believe that meeting is going to start at 6:00 PM. It'll be here in the town hall meeting room. Each of the respondents will be invited to present for 30 minutes, 30 to 45 minutes. The board will be able to ask questions. It will obviously be open to the public and recorded so that, you know, hopefully there will be some movement on the Kern school.
What was the date again?
January 13th.
That is amazing news. It really is. All right, well, thank you for that update. Before we do close out, I did want to circle back to the fact that we have no hearings for the next meeting. Based on everything that we discussed here, it seems like the only thing that could be something that we could discuss is if you had time to put together the next cut of the proposed changes to the zoning regulations. So I would ask, would that be something we could, should do in that day? Or should we move it forward to another meeting? Or what would you like us to do?
Yeah, so because the second January meeting works better for Conservation Commission to present their proposed changes to the regulations, it might make sense to have those both in the same night and just have a regulation center thing.
Okay.
If the commission is in agreement. So then the 14th, unless something pressing comes up, would be canceled, and then we would meet on the 28th of January.
Work weeks for me. Okay. All right, so there'll be no additional meetings in December?
Right.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. All right, well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close out tonight.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Hearing none?
Motion is.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
That was quick.